Thank you everyone for coming today. I just want to say now, been kind of gorgeous weather since all the rain we've had. And I had ventured for the last, on the four days, to the trip to our capital in DC. And I realized where I'm always happy to get back, but traffic is terrible. But it was a nice trip. A friend of mine just got promoted to Star General. And now she gets to give her first briefing to the Secretary of Defense this week. So she's got a lot on her plate. So moving on down, Commissioners, the first thing we need to do is to accuse two of our Commissioners. Morgan Mailer, he will not be able to be here tonight. And Commissioner Wong will be here probably in the next 10 to 15 minutes. I have a motion to accuse both of them. All in favor, all opposed, I'll have it. Thank you. If we could, moving on down, looking at item three, approval of the agenda. Commissioners have an opportunity to look over the agenda. I will mark this one change we do need to make, item six on the agenda. The Deputy Manager for Candy cannot be here tonight. So I ask for a change on that, but we just take that off the agenda. Can you interchange it by the other Commissioners, Might that have a motion to accept the agenda with that one change?
Motion to accept.
All in favor, all opposed, I'll have it. Thank you. We'll move on to item four, Consent Agenda. All items on Consent Agenda are considered routine to be enacted by one motion without discussion. If a member of the governing body requests a discussion on the item, the item will be removed from Consent Agenda and considered separately. The Commissioners may have an opportunity to look over Consent Agenda if there's not any changes. Or any items will be removed, and I have a motion if we accept the amendment in support. All in favor, all opposed, I'll have it. Thank you. I'll call just a second, because I can make a walk in the door.
Motion to accept.
Motion for all in favor, all opposed, I'll have it. Thank you, Commissioner Wong. Appreciate you being here, sir.
Yes, sir.
We already approved the motion, put it back off. Okay, we move on to public comments. I don't see that anybody has signed up for public comments. Is there anyone that would like to make any comments? If not, we won't open it up and we'll just move on. Move down to six, and then item seven, the presentation. And the first one, the presentation, will be Mr. Nick Cannon. Sir, if you will come forward. Transportation Demand Management Coordinator, WNPO Presentation, Change in Motion 2020. Sir, I would like to introduce yourself. Thank you for being here tonight. What work that you do with us, I appreciate that. And before we're yours, sir.
Of course, thank you for having me. Can you leave me driving?
Yes, I'll get your presentation up in one second.
Thank you, Commissioners, and Mayor Allen, I appreciate you having me here tonight. My name is Nick Cannon, I'm the Transportation Demand Management Coordinator with the Wilmington Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. Which I know is not full, we are a federally mandated organization based off the population of our region and provide transportation planning services to our member jurisdictions, of which the town of Belleville is one. And Mayor Allen serves on our board. I'm here tonight to present on our short-range TDM, Transportation Managing Plan, which was adopted by our board, so I'm just bouncing around from municipality to municipality, presenting this newly adopted plan. This is just for informational purposes, it's a fairly lengthy presentation because I want to be inclusive. But this is just a broad overview of this plan, so that as a member jurisdiction, you know, of an initiative that we will be pushing over the next one, two, five years. In this presentation, I'll go over the purpose of the plan, its development process, the strategies, the scorecard within the plan, and then how we plan to implement it. So first, overall, what this plan aims to do is identify strategies that mitigate traffic congestion. It's a short-range plan, so it has a one to five-year lifespan, and the overall goal is to reduce vehicle miles traveled or the MT by 10% over the next five years. I'll just read the mission statement pretty quickly, it's to provide area residents with the resources and offer motivation to choose healthy, sustainable, and effective multimodal transportation to reduce stress on the roadway network and increase alternative means of mobility. So as we are planning more transportation projects for the future, 25, 30, 40 years in the future, we're learning it's not economically, environmentally sustainable, nor is it healthy or safe to just build more and more roads to accommodate more and more cars and single occupancy vehicles. So to make sure that we can afford everything we want in the future and not have a 40-minute commute two miles down the road, we need to utilize more means of mobility and diversify our mode use. For the development process, we first convened the GO Coast Committee, the steering committee for the GO Coast program, and reviewed the TDM element of our long-range plan, Cape Fear Moving Forward 2045, which was adopted by our board this past November. We then reviewed the survey responses from that plan and then released our own survey for Cape Fear Change in Motion 2020. And those surveys asked specific questions about biking, walking, carpooling, how people get around now versus how they would like to get around in the future. There was public comment period, and then we prioritized these strategies. This same image is within the plan, so I will let you do that on your own time. But just wanted to briefly go over this to see, overall, that there is, the community shows that they would prefer to use alternative means of transportation in the future more than they do now. I decided for each of these strategies, but there were seven strategies identified as viable opportunities to decrease traffic congestion over the next five years. They are alternative work schedules, bike share program, carpooling and van pooling, consulting for telecommuting, fostering bicycle and pedestrian friendly culture, improved TDM collaboration, and personalized commuter plans. First, alternative work schedules are just varieties of scheduling options to allow people more flexibility when coming and going to work. So if you're a major employer, you might have a third of your workforce showing up at seven, leaving at four, a third working the typical eight to five, and a third coming in at nine, leaving at six. This reduces the commuting trips and mitigates traffic on the roadway during peak hours. This is, this is a really big strategy that a lot of people might be able to advocate for themselves, for their employer. Maybe they have a dog that they want to pick up from a doggy daycare at a certain time, or children, or go to the gym, whatever have you. This is a strategy that individuals can adapt themselves for themselves and use in their, in their personal work life to accommodate themselves better when coming to them from work. This may discourage carpooling and van pooling, it may be difficult to gather accurate data, but we can see that this strategy is successful through education outreach and promoting to our major area employers. The city of Wilmington is the only member jurisdiction that has shown an interest in developing or implementing, rather, a bike share program. But this is a service in which bikes are made available on a very short-term basis for, for trips that are usually less than one to two miles, point A to point B. This reduces the need for single occupancy vehicles, it's healthy, environmentally friendly, has character to the city, it's popular amongst tourists. We need to identify funding sources, but if the city of Wilmington does implement a bike share program and other member jurisdictions see that it's successful and want to implement their own micro mobility program, we're happy to assist with that. Carpooling and van pooling creates opportunities for people to share a vehicle when traveling to and from nearby locations. This reduces traffic, it reduces demand for parking, especially if they're going to work. It does eliminate flexibility for coming to and from work, and with COVID-19, we have seen that people might not be willing to share close quarters with individuals who they do not know very well. And also, in the Wilmington urban area, our average commute time is nine minutes shorter than the national average. So there might not be a strong desire, people might feel that they have a very variable commute, as is. But for this application, for this strategy, we can market Share the Right in C, which is our platform that we use through DOT to provide carpool matches for members of the area. We promote our parking lot rods and share way of opportunities with our major area employers. Consulting for telecommuting opportunities is a new strategy. This is a service that's starting from scratch, but GO Coast is assisting our area employers in implementing their own telecommuting policies and programs. This is free to businesses, they don't have to implement it, they can pick and choose whatever we develop for them. But this reduces the need for private infrastructure, for traffic during peak hours. All the good stuff that we ourselves have experienced during the past year through COVID-19, when needing to be more flexible and doing business from home. We need to connect with our area employers, obviously, to do this, but this can be, can be done by modeling other telecommuting policies that we see are successful and showing these area employers what they can do for their own employees. Fostering the bicycle and pedestrian friendly culture was the number-one strategy that's identified in this plan. It increases safety for bicycles and pedestrians, it gives authority to biking and walking as legitimate modes of transportation. As we educate individuals, we reduce injuries and fatalities, but we also promote culture and public spaces and provide them an opportunity for education. Some challenges, obviously, has always been speeding and distracted driving and lack of bicycle pedestrian connectivity in some areas. But for this strategy, we can participate in programs like the Looker, Watch Me in Sea, Vision Zero, and hold successful bicycle-oriented events. We are actually planning an inaugural Brunswick Heritage Riverside Ride that will take place this October. And that is something that was requested from our partners in Navasa. So the WNPO, Navasa, Belleville, Leaven, Dunlop County have all teamed up to organize this inaugural ride, taking place on October 23rd. But that will be a 16-mile round-trip ride from Phoenix Park in Navasa down here to Brunswick Riverwalk Park and then back up. So if you guys aren't doing anything at 7:30 in the morning on October 23rd, come join the ride. But through holding more bike-friendly events like that, we will foster more bicycle pedestrian friendly culture and see that there is more safety in our communities. TD and focus collaboration is kind of what I'm doing now, so that is increasing collaboration with GO Coast staff, myself, the WNPO, and our member jurisdictions to see that these strategies in this plan are successful. So we need to increase application for multimodal infrastructure, increase the TDM strategies that are actually applied. And for this, we just developed really good relationships with each of our member jurisdictions and reduce traffic congestion in whatever way possible that our member jurisdictions may see fit. I've given this presentation many times, so I apologize if I'm speaking quickly, but I'm very rehearsed with this. Personalized commuter plans are catered plans to provide recommended ways that people can utilize alternative transportation in their personal life when it is feasible for them. So we're not telling everyone, drop your car and just bike, just say public transportation. We're showing individuals how they can take the bus to grocery store, how to find a carpooling partner, how to bike to work one to two days a week. So this is just when it's viable, just when it's something that they feel that they can do in their personal lives. We have to collect personal information, like where people live and where people work, where people are going, but this can be offered to anyone living or working in the WNPO planning boundary. The main thing I want you to take away from this presentation tonight is that although we are very proud of this plan and is a very long, extensive plan, I would hope it's successful over the next five years, it's not an exhaustive list of strategies. So if there is any other TD and oriented service or program that the town of Belleville would like to see to combat traffic congestion, to create more bicycle pedestrian friendly culture, to not have so many vehicles right here on river road between five and six, whatever that may be, we are here to help you with those goals. So that may be providing more information and marketing to your residents, developing comprehensive plans, writing ordinances. This is a good list, and we're going to follow it for the next five years, but if there's anything else that you all would like to see, we're here for that as well. I'll go over these next few slides pretty quickly. In this plan, there's a scorecard, each strategy was placed into one of two categories, primary priority or secondary priority, and they were scored off either implementation, cost, existing conditions, demand, their impact on traffic, and their impact on the MT. To implement this plan, first, it was adopted by the WNPO board, check that out. Now we are presenting to our member jurisdictions to make sure that our elected officials and our governing bodies are aware of this plan and that it's something that we would be, that we will be seeking out to make successful over the next five years. We then adhere to the strategies in this work plan, which include advice on how to market for public outreach, establishing and maintaining relationships with our partners, holding successful events, collecting data, all that good stuff. And then we have ready to review by our TD and staff and the GO Coast Committee. And that was a lot. Again, just wanted to share that with you all, so that you know it's something that our organization has adopted and something we're really excited about. I can take any questions at this time, or have a way to do it?
Question? Nick, I'd like to thank you for coming here and I know it's been busy. You know, you, your team, and matter of fact, our whole team on the WNPO, y'all do an outstanding job. Looking at these projects, you know, sometimes you're skeptical, you know, it's so hard to get people out of their vehicles. The congestion is building here. And like I said, I just came from DC for the last four days. The congestion there is still terrible, but they do have alternative plans. A lot of new riders bicycle to work, believe it or not. With their rail and everything they have, so they have a lot of different alternatives they can use. But if you don't build the infrastructure, it's never going to happen. And it's going to be more congested, less safe. So hopefully, even in our small town, even our empty next winter park and what we want is a downtown area, won't let the cars get there. Bypass, water, whatever you've got, alternative method. Get cars off the road, but congestion here probably in five years will be tremendous.
Right, yeah, the member jurisdictions on this side of the river are more unique than some of the member jurisdictions closer to Wilmington. Because we're on that side of the river, kind of trying to catch up with the, the traffic congestion that's already been created. But you all have a really unique opportunity to, to kind of be ahead of that.
I always said, a lot of these programs, they can be initiated while you're building and add them into your strategy, they work a lot better.
Yeah.
Biggest part, and what I'm glad we got people like you and the team that worked with us, who are promoting this. And always have to keep pushing for it, it won't happen. But thank you so much. Any other questions?
Sure, thanks.
All right, yes.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
So moving on, on the, I'm cheap, the next one is going to be kind of a special item in presentation number seven. That's basically recognizing a special presentation by the Board of Commissioners for our town manager.
Y'all can chime in anytime you want to, let me take this one.
Go ahead.
Kind of kept this kind of quiet, which I have to admit, I'm kind of surprised that we actually succeeded. Because we were going to do this last month, and we got canceled, so we actually kept it going for another 30 days. So what it's basically about is Belleville has gone through a lot, has seen a lot, a lot of growth. The last two years, this board has seen a lot of growth as well. But that can't be done without a team concept, a team effort. I've seen a lot of people come and go, I've served on the board twice in 2013 from 2019. David's been on the board a couple of times, often. Mayor's been on the board 13 years now, so it isn't that long. Well, I was doing the math, we had your sign, I think it was 13 or 12 or something. But it's very important that we have a good staff behind us. And the times that I've been on here, the couple of times that I've been on the board, there's been a person that has been a steady person and has been here. You know, has committed herself to this town, has been pretty much the running ship. You know, she kind of held my hand the first time around, now she's trying to keep me under control this time around. Trying to make sure that I, you know, do what I'm supposed to be doing. But it's always somebody I can count on. Town is really, really fortunate to have this person, you can't tell you how lucky you know to have this person in a position that we have now, because she has been incredible. And she's not just incredible in this town, I have some people from other jurisdictions come here and ask for help. And even though it might not be within our town, she'll still help them try to find, solve their problems. So she's an amazing person. But what's really incredible is the fact that she's been here 15 years. That's, that's significant with a small town. You know, people come and go, people have other opportunities, they kind of move on, I've seen a lot of change in faces. But she's, she's constant, she's steady, she's incredibly committed. Can't say enough about how much we appreciate that and how much we think about you. So I want to say first, thank you and congratulations. Love for you to come up here and accept this gift that we've got for you, which once again, I'm just amazed you never found out about it. Please, please open it up. Sharon insisted on wrapping this. We were trying to create an employee recognition program on the campaign. So this is kind of a segment of the election, for the 15 years in first. My God, it's like watching my sister.
There's some little things in there that go on it.
Just sort of something. While we're going on this, when I first met Athena, I came, I just retired from the military and I went to town to pay my city tax. I was mad because our town hall was inside the town of Leaven. I weren't happy with it, Athena's the one I dealt with. So after I get on the board, you know, all town goes through trial and tribulation, leadership issues, whatever happens over the years. Athena spent that one steadfast compass, or you call it a common storm. She'd been in the eye of the storm, kept the ship upright from sinking through everything that's happened in the town the last 15 years. Athena was thankful for your service, thankful for what you've done, thankful for the future of what we know of the county. But like I say, everything that's happened in this town since you got here, she's always been the center, been the com, kept her running. No matter who, or the council or the leadership that's been here, she has been in the process of getting this town together. Athena, thank you for that. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All I would like to say. More years of it. But, did you like to say anything, or?
It's very humble that, you know, you all have allowed me the opportunity to be here and grow. And I do remember that day when you came into town hall. And just look at us now, sir, thank you so much.
Yes, things have changed, and all of us sit here, you know, we think, you know, we sit on this council, we can make decisions for the town, but if you don't have the right person to execute, doesn't happen. Town feels, Athena knows everybody, she knows how to coordinate, she can make the right phone calls. I'm baffled when she makes these calls either. That's just happened just past Thursday, we had all the rain, we had flooding issue. We needed DOT, well, you know, DOT in our county's face to make the sound of the house. They went from 60-some personnel down to 13 that operate this county. So you know when we have flooding issues in a county this size. But she made one phone call, guess what, we got a team there that gives us water. That's what it takes to make things happen, and she can make it happen. Athena's proud to serve with you. And I thank you for the hard work and your staff also, we appreciate it. Do you have a comment?
I'm just happy we got a pastor.
Yeah, for this time.
But we, as it is tonight, and I look forward to the years to come, are going to get even better. So, okay, we'll move on to under seven, under seven C, and I don't think the chief is here.
So I just talked to him and he stays mixed, and so he's going to try to come to the October meeting.
So he'll be in October meeting.
We might want to go ahead and pass a resolution.
Yeah, chief level, I've met him before, and he's one of the chief of Tusker War tribes. And indigenous people that were here before we were here. But Tusker War go back a long way in America's history. But during some of the Battle of the Revolutionary War, the Indian wars and everything happened, they were basically got sometime on the wrong side. They were broken up and scattered, not only in our state, but they had went down to South Carolina, Virginia, all the way in the defensive line. So they have multiple tribes of them now, I've met some of them, and some of the chiefs, and what they want to do is promote the cultural side of the indigenous people. We're going to have to start a cultural being here in our park system. And the Tusker War Indians are going to have like exhibition, show their culture and their history. And COVID kind of stopped that from the first of being happening, but it's going to start happening. I think it's going to be a great thing for our area, a great thing to promote the cultural part in more history of this nation, to let them show. So in doing to do that, we got a resolution 21-25, a resolution commemorating Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the town of Belleville, we've had many contributions made to our community through indigenous people, knowledge, labor, science, philosophy, arts, culture, and technology. And whereas indigenous people already occupied the land, which later became known as the Americas. And whereas the town of Belleville seeks to combat cultural prejudice to eliminate racial discrimination and to bring awareness and understanding, good relations among indigenous people and all other segments. And to provide awareness and understanding, good relations among indigenous people and all other segments of our community. And whereas the Belleville Board of Commissioners recognized the second Monday of October. As Indigenous Peoples' Day by adopting previous resolutions consistent with the U.S. Declaration of Independence for all people. Including those who descend from indigenous peoples. A desire to uphold policies and practices that ensure equal access to opportunity. And the rights to pursue life legally inhabitants in America. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day has first proposed in nineteen seventy-seven by the Declaration of Native Nations. To the United States International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. Now therefore it be resolved that the Belleville Board of Commissioners hereby declares. The second Monday of October, which will be celebrated this year on October eleventh, twenty twenty-one, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. To celebrate and honor indigenous people and their shared history and culture. Be it further resolved that the town of Belleville recognizes its responsibility to honor the nation's indigenous roots. History's tradition and cultural contributions to the United States of America. Declare this twenty-seventh day of September, twenty twenty-one, signed by Mayor Mike Allen. I will make, we'll get this to the chief, but hopefully we'll have him here in October, so he can talk some about the cultural of his people. I think everybody, when they do have, we have it here in the park. And I think, I hope we can really promote it and have people can try to understand the culture of the indigenous people that were here before we came to the Americas. So any comments from just mission?
No comments.
Yes, thank you so much.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The aye, aye, thank you. I'm looking forward to that day myself. Okay, we move on to item eight, and that's appointments to the Park and Rec Board. If I can, the notes in the face, and I think we do have some of the people here. Like Mr. Tim Wilson here, if I'm correct. And, uh. We can list, see who else is here.
Lynn.
Lynn, Gavin. Okay, so we do have two here, we have Miss Amanda, and I cannot pronounce that last name. And Joe Henson Jr. I think we, part of it, we'll put all of them on the board if I'm correct, Mountain Town Manager.
Yes, the Parks and Recreation Board has recommended that you appoint them as alternates so that they can serve on various committees.
And I think the reason behind this, you know, one of the biggest, brightest things we have here in our town is our park. And our programs, but it takes talent to keep these things running and promote them. And we need that advisory committee to keep a constant overlook, not only to keep going what we have, but to add to that. And to find new things that we can put in there to help the people in our communities, not only learn about our town and what we have here. So just like with the indigenous people, the history of this area and everything that's going on, that we can have events that families can come out and enjoy. And so we want to promote it, we want to encourage people to come down and see what we see. And that's a gorgeous riverfront, trails to walk on, fish. But also we'll have opportunities and shows and different things in the park that can promote our small town environment. But also promote the culture and the history of this area. So I'm looking forward to it. So if I could, the two individuals that are here, y'all come up. Could I have a motion? If we said we four people into our Park and Rec Board.
Motion to accept the four nominees.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The aye, aye. We're getting this both over together, if you want to, if you want to do this. I say your name.
Tim Wilson.
Do solemn swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States. And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office. As member of the Park and Recreation Board for the town of Belleville, so have we done. Okay, congratulations, welcome to the Park and Rec Board. And this is a very important. Committees that we have in our boards, this Park and Rec Board, the reason we want it to grow is because. You know, the center of our culture and everything that happens here, we have to have the right people, the right advice, the right visions. That can give us things that we can improve and help push forward to make this a better place to live. Promote our culture, the history here, but main a lot of, just so people can come and enjoy themselves with their families. Not places, so thank y'all for volunteering, we really appreciate you, and thank you so much. Y'all would like an opportunity to say something, good morning, well. But thank y'all, like I say, thank you again. Kim and Lynn, we look forward to seeing you. Hope y'all really enjoy. So we, we really enjoy having y'all volunteer for it. Okay, we move on to item nine, old business, update on the Brundt Riverwalk project and upcoming events and construction dates. So you want me to take that, or you going to take some out of there, man?
Um, I just wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor, that we are having our fall festival this Saturday. And that'll be from ten to three, sponsored by the Parks and Recreation Board. Nick mentioned the bike ride that we were going to be having, the heritage ride on the twenty-third. And then later that afternoon, we're also going to have a group there that's going to do a walk for charity. And then on the twenty-fourth, we will actually have some representatives from the park service. That will be coming to take a look at our park along with representatives from the Gulligichi Trail. So we have a, a lot of exciting events happening in October. And encourage everybody to participate if possible.
Yeah, and that one thing, uh, that you know, we depend on our Park and Rec Board a lot, is get a message out. To people in our area, to know what events that we are having, and encourage them to be there. Coordination is a key factor on it, but once people get there, they can really enjoy themselves, and hopefully we have gorgeous weather for it. But, uh, thank you so much on that. I think also, we talking about construction updates and everything, you know, we're putting in a new, uh. Flooding pier with a kayak launch, where motorized boats can pull up to its top. It'll come up over our existing fishing pier. Mountain Town Manager, do we have a speculation date on when that may start?
We still have just a little bit of red tape to go through. So I would estimate that construction might begin in November or December.
Yeah, like other government projects, so they take time. But the money has been allocated for, I think the approval's been done. Doesn't matter getting it done, getting construction bids out. And I think it's going to be a big bust for the town, you know, our pier, where you put your boats in and everything, our dock. They won't allow to dredge it, so it does create some issues, but at least now if you didn't get stuck out there. You'll have a boat ramp, you come up at least tied up two away from tide to cover it. You can get off your boat, and like I say, we'll have a nice kayak launch if you want to go out with your kayaks in the river. So, uh, and there'll be water under it twenty-four seven, when they're having dry ground, so. That's a good thing, a little bit forward to it, again, the staff and everybody's been on that, and the driving force to stay on it. Because there's a lot that happens to make these systems work. A lot of paperwork that I could not deal with. Any other comments? Okay, if we, uh, we're under old bids, we'll go to mine B, update on street and drainage repairs. We definitely talk about that after this rains. Mountain Town Manager, you want to mention some of?
This photo that the town clerk has up now is South Old Town Line, I think you mentioned earlier. So there are probably about four or five spots throughout town on that kind of looks similar to that. And so we're trying as hard as we can to work with certain agencies to see if we can give these homeowners some relief in those areas. We will keep you updated on our progress. NC DOT was very responsive to us, state utility contractors, is also very responsive in helping over on Deep Woods Court. So we will continue to see what we can do to keep these problems from happening in the future. And keep our fingers crossed we don't have any future storms.
Yeah, she's talking about that, you know, we had all this past rain, I got a call from a couple individuals about flooding issues in certain areas. So I always take it to a point that I'd rather look at it personally. And go down, because you got to see and feel what some people see and feel. Even though sometimes we get there, and it's more trying to help them find a solution than sometimes solutions that the town could do. A lot of ditches when developers build communities, a lot of ditches are in the back of their homes and run through there. Well, all that property or the easement through there belongs to the developers. It belongs to the property owner, that belongs to the town. But when developers leave, those easements are just left in limbo. So the homeowners, they don't know to clean them out. They think the town's going to clean it out, and the town has nothing to do with it. But over time, everything grows up in them, they get stocked up, get what you have, flooding problems. But in the town itself, we still feel like that we have an obligation to seek solutions for these problems. And we're going to do what we can, working with the homeowners, for trying to resolve any water problems we have. We're doing that right now with one of our communities. The other one's coordinated with DOT, which our town manager, we're fortunate that she has some talents to get DOT to move. So that helps us out a lot, and we're trying to resolve these issues because we know the rain we have, we have hurricanes, or. Our weather, we know, with all the water we have there, we don't have water problems. And some of them are not going to solve, if just too much water comes down. But every place we can, we're going to be partnering with the homeowners and the taxpayers of this town to fix those problems, we can fix them, or help fix them. So we did pretty good for trying to help somebody get rid of these water problems, at least two areas that we had here the last rain. Okay, moving on to nine C, my update on coronavirus actions. And Town Manager, you want to make some comments on that?
Just wanted to let everyone know that we are working with some representatives from Withersdravenell. And identifying some uses and projects that we can use our American Rescue Plan funds for. All across the board for the non-entitlement cities, those like the town of Belleville. We're still kind of on pause right now, and still waiting to see what the final, final, final recommendation will be for the use of those funds. But in the meantime, we are planning. We've so far gotten a quote from ATMC for a possible broadband project. That will go along with the new boardwalk. That would encompass broadband and also cameras. We've gotten a quote also from ATMC for cybersecurity, so that we can upgrade our server. And we'll be reaching out to other companies to get their bids as well. So we are planning so that you'll have options to look at. Once we know for sure what we can spend the funds on. And the other practical side would be that some of your staff members will be going tomorrow to get their booster shot. So we are keeping up on the.
Yeah, we do.
Preventive measures.
You know, do encourage people, you know, you get your own feelings, but. You know, even back, if you go back as far as I can go back, when polio and some of the other things were coming around, we had to take those shots, they're mandatory. I hate to see people be forced to do things, but two of my friends have died in the last month from COVID, only because they would not take the shot. There'd be a lot of days they took them, but they decided not to. I believe people should have free will to do, say please, but when you lose your friends. You should take the shots, unless you have a medical reason. Or a very religious related reason, if you can't take it, you can't take it. And I think that's just an individual decision you'll have to make. But I encourage, personally, I encourage people, give them vaccination. The booster shots, I think that's, see, you have to make it to the doctor. I talk with my doctors, when I take it, and I talk to my doctors about the booster shots. But, but it is saving lives. I encourage everybody to take. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, personally, your captain, Captain Ryan. Young man. But I mean, it's just, that's, it's anybody. I see your registration, vaccination, a lot of protocols, it's just that. Beginning unfortunate at some point.
Got that, I remember my old military days, every time you got ready to go overseas, they just told you, go, maybe get some shots, they'd tell you what they were. I don't love anybody in all my military years, just died from it. I got a little sick sore, two little side effects, that's about it. I hope people do the right thing. Okay, we'll move on to item ten, under regular agenda, transportation update. I think Mr. Joe Boyd, the chairman of our planning board, do we have him on?
Yes, sir, he's on the phone here.
These will have to do with our projects that we have in our town.
Yes. Go ahead, Joe.
I guess I will give you, you know, the, uh, pretending everyone can hear either, uh, mayor and commissioners, thanks for having me. But I just wanted to comment, because I think all of the Riverwalk project, from multi-use capacity, so. Pops water down to Rice Hope, we, we've got our sixty percent approval this, this week, actually, we got it, I believe this morning, you know, is that correct? Might have been Friday, but we got our sixty percent approval, so now we can go on to ninety percent, which that will involve the big documents, say, preparing, analyzing the plans. So our path is pretty much set, as in the route. It's should be, nothing really that big of issues or rules, it's like most of those at the stage right now. So we should be looking good, there were a couple adjustments we had to make, and because. We should be looking good, uh, there were a couple adjustments we had to make, and because the dishes have to be cleaned out, shoot up the drainage. And, and again, it's gonna go from multi-water down to Rice Hope, and over the next couple weeks, we'll get the. The social documents and the bid documents and the nine percent plans finalized, and there's that DOT facility.
If everything goes smoothly, Joe, what would you predict the construction date to be?
We would likely be starting, I would say, after the new year. If, if we can get to bid around the new year, there's been another month of bidding, I mean, I'd say the earliest, we're probably looking to February, March. If you don't want to start construction in February, you can, but it probably, one should be a good estimate, so.
Okay, that sounds great.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, guys, any questions?
We're good, Joe, thank you. I think what, like I said, what we're talking about, we do have two, uh, projects coming up on our walkway and bike path. We're moving forward with them, like our, uh, chairman of planning board, which is also on the engineering group. Projects, then it's be promised, start about the first of the year. But that'll be a good promotion in the town, uh, the access that it gives us, where you can come out and walk out of your community down at our park. Right by super, initially, it'll all link together from our town hall all the way down. And later on, maybe more, this project comes on, much later, approved by some DMPO boards. Try to get some more projects as well, it's another project that DOT is doing. And the wise just rode out here from the stoplight down past where the entrance goes into DOT. And where our new, uh, apartment complex, from your apartment, will be going. But there's a lot getting ready to happen in the town, a lot of construction, I think next year is gonna be a busy year for us. I'm looking forward to it, so it helps build our infrastructure. Show the people in town that we don't sit out here and get all this big pay for nothing. But, uh, it's good for the town, uh, it's gonna help the people, I think the people will be a lot happier when it's over. Could it will create improvements, uh, like, for, that's where we're here, these projects need to be moved around and the last. I think we can, uh, any other comments?
No, sir, just wanted to, um, let everyone know that we did speak with a few developers, um. Today, and things are looking very positive for, like the mayor said, next year as far as our apartment project that would be coming into town, so.
I think next year is gonna be a, uh, very productive year for our town, a lot's gonna happen. Uh, even our negotiation, uh, with our sound town project, uh, starting to look very good. Got all the additional property turned over to us by DOT, and we're still in the process. Of negotiating for another contract to take over the rest of downtown DOT property. And I talked with some of the other landlords, uh, today. Uh, where the land attaches to the DOT property about its acquisition, that also looks very promising. So, I think, uh, next, this, uh, rest of this year, next year is gonna be big for this town. Okay, move on to item ten B, Miss Robin Spinks, a pre-sale. Coming up, I'll let her introduce herself, as well as what she's gonna be talking about.
Good evening, and I'm excited to hear about, uh, what you just said about those downtown properties, so. That's great, congratulations, keep going. Um, for those of you that have been here before, and y'all know that I've started my. Work in Belleville on that downtown concept and the economic analysis of that. And, um, y'all have been so kind as to keep us on to try to look at some of that. And some of the other corridors in town that are your commercial corridors and see what we can do. To try to help you bring some business into town, so, um, Sharon's getting.
Robin, can you pull that mic around a little bit?
Can you hear, can you hear better?
Yeah, that's what, this is too bad, it's there.
Okay, um, and again, forgive me, I put this together real fast, Athena, because I, I was just gonna talk, and then I thought. That you might want to see the maps that I was gonna be talking about, so. Um, and I, I, I also have up there retail recruitment, but I think it's a much broader ones. Once I really started looking, I did this before I started talking to, uh, developers and realtors and so forth. And I, I think it's a bigger issue of not just retail, but commercial in general, uh, support and trying to. To get business of all types to, to come here. So what we're gonna do is we're looking at the possible sites, and then we're gonna see what we can do to help you market them. So the site areas are included, as I said, the new downtown, and then all of the commercially zoned areas, including. Blackwell Road, um, and then up on the south side of Blackwell Road, up onto the right side, or the east side of Chapel Road. River Road, obviously, um, both the downtown and then on the, on the west side. And then the Waterford Business Park and the Magnolia Industrial Park behind Water. So those are the kind of the areas that, that we're focused on. Um, in addition to, um, what we're gonna do with those is we're gonna start by cataloging and. Um, just identifying all of the undeveloped parcels in those corridors that are zoned for commercial. And then, look, we, and we've done that already, and then, uh, researched MLS and discussed with realtors. What the availability is of some of those properties, and then the ones that are not currently on the market, we're gonna try to talk to the owners to see. What the opportunities are and, you know, if they would make them available under what conditions. Uh, we also are gonna look at the uses and see if, if in our opinion. The highest investor use is the zoning that currently exists, or advise if we think that some things need to be. Um, changed in any, you know, in any way, shape or form. Um, and then, again, as I said, talk to the owners about wha- what they're seeing, if it's available and. Um, just some ideas that they have a- about different ways to position the property for reuse. So, um, the things that we've done so far, uh, oh, the marketing, so on the marketing side, we're gonna. Try to, uh, give you some advice about what your competitors are doing, because anytime you're looking at properties, a business is looking at your properties. They're looking at them in a lot of different places, and it would be rare if they were looking at them all in Belleville. So we know that Leland has some recruitment incentives and other towns. Uh, generally don't have retail and commercial recruitment, but they certainly have industrial recruitment incentives. Um, and the site control options that we've talked about, especially for downtown, and y'all are making some movement on that. Uh, we have already started talking to a couple of local development, developers who would be interested in the different. Uh, areas to find out what their interests might be and why, and why not. Um, I've talked to all but one of the realtors who currently are listing the properties that are for sale. Um, Mary, in particular, my business partner, attends, um. The ICSC, which is the shopping center convention in Las Vegas that happens every year. And she's gonna do that in November, it normally takes place in the spring, but, um. It was deferred until December, and then it will be again in May, so. And she's been going there for many years, so we have a lot of contacts for different national. Commercial type companies that, that we can, once we take a look at the properties and sort of get some information together, then. We think we can proactively go after some different kinds of people, and so, for example, um. Athena had asked us about some specific things that we very quickly got the data, so we looked to see about Starbucks. And you're, you are on the, the, the AMs, uh, Highway seventy-four, the, the morning recruit, uh. Trip into town, and for Starbucks, that's great, the traffic on River Road's not kind of, certainly it is on seventy-four, so it's just a question of. Um, getting them off of the highway, uh, we looked at Cracker Barrel, and sadly, they're on the PM side, uh. They prefer the PM side of seventy-four, and so, um, the, again, the traffic council is good, but on the wrong side of the road, so that one. It's not necessarily, it's good, but then there are a lot of thing, quick data that we can look at, we have friends that have that information, so things we can do. We want to put together some materials, and then, again, like I said, start, um, you know, start marketing if we can. Um, I, I've already told you what, what we've done so far, but one thing that you'll see when you see the maps next. Is one issue with a lot of the commercial land, especially, well, e- everywhere, let's just say, on, on pretty much all of the corridors. Is that there was a huge amount of wetlands that, you know, I remember the first time I drove down Blackwell Road when. I first started working, and I thought, gosh, look at all this red undeveloped land on, uh, right there with. Could possible visibility on seventy-four, and since I looked at the map, I realized why, because the whole north side practically is, uh, is wetland, so. Um, the first, um, uh, property, and y'all have seen this one before in the vision twenty thirty or four. Those are all of the parcels that we consider to be downtown, and the yellow shading there is, if, is wetlands. So, um, I, I don't need to talk about that one anymore, y'all have heard enough about downtown. Um, this is, uh, the, the west side of River Road and the parcels that are quote undeveloped. And the little blue dot is your apartment complex, so that one's, according to MLS, that's still pending, the sale is still pending, I s- I assume it's. Depended on some approvals, and maybe that's all done, and they just haven't updated the MLS sheet yet. And then there is, uh, the, the three parcels that belong to the same, uh, owner there at the very north corner. And I had talked to the realtor about those and what the opportunities and limitations have been, they've had it listed for several years now. And, um, so, yeah, I got an earful about, you know, what, what they thought, which was useful. So, um, anyway, next one, no, this is Whackal Road. And, uh, you can see that whole, you know, other than that northwest or northeast corner, and, and again, you'll see the. The blue outlines of the parcels that are not currently developed, only one of those is currently for sale. And I have talked to that, uh, realtor also, but just a huge amount of area that's wetlands that, you know, it's just. No opportunity there, and unfortunately, that biggest chunk of that is on the Belleville side of the road, and, and also the Leland side. But I did get some good information from the realtor about, you know, ideas and things. Um, the next one is the, a place of the Waterford part of that park, and there's one lot officially for sale in there. Lot ten, where the store is, and I have not talked to that, I, I left a message for them, but I have not talked to that realtor yet. And, um, then this is the, uh, undeveloped property on the backside of that, which is the Magnolia Business Park. And I, I, I think I had understood from y'all that those two long narrow northern areas, there's been, you know, some ideas about apartments there. And then those two, three properties on the far west side, which, uh, on the. Um, I, I think I had heard that that was where the, uh, reverse osmosis project was gonna go, so the biggest pieces are already taken. So the small areas that are left are generally owned by the, by the youth next door, and so, I, I. They may or may not be able to be available, they may be expansion space, which that would be good if those projects would expand. But at least we now have a good catalog, we're starting to get some, uh, bits on the ground information from, from the people who were closer to it, and. We'll really start trying to figure out what to do about it, um, starting, you know, that, those are kind of our next steps. So, um, that's basically my reports, and if I can answer any questions for you, I am more than happy to do that.
Well, thanks, uh, Robin, we appreciate your analysis and what you've done, have been a great asset to the town. And I think the future of the town is gonna be based on a lot of your assessment, what potentially we do have. You know, I think our part, uh, right now, part of the mission, and us is get our models out of the way, once DOT. Uh, get that property, the other properties that are available for us to get a hold of, but down basic coordination with one person on. The other big chunk of the property.
Right.
So, uh, I think, like I said, I think next year's a great potential for us in this whole area. And we got to have a plan, which is the biggest thing you're helping with. That, uh, that we can not only have it, have a vision, but be able to execute some plans and put the right players in the right place. You'll be having, I am talking to some money people also that we. Uh, that have the money, that, that they could invest in our area if we can pencil this, a good project, and I might need to help on that.
Well, we do have, once, in addition to the actual users, we do have contacts with a number of developers, which I, I didn't mention, I think that was on the list.
I'm hoping that some of the construction, yeah, some of the actual, the two apartment. Groups that are gonna build along with our road projects, uh, can bring some more attention to our area, that things are happening.
Well, both, but the realtors that I have talked to so far, they said that more density of residential certainly would help the case for. The, for any retail, but as you may remember from the downtown study, there's already a ton of leakage, you know, just a whole lot of leakage, so. Um, it, it won't do anything but get bigger as the residential density increases, so. And we'll use that retail, and I didn't say that, but we will use that retail leakage information that we collected for the downtown study to. To pick and choose the types of companies that we, that we send information to.
I'm glad we got you on the card team, uh, helping the town, I think it's, uh. We got to look forward a lot more, uh, be a lot more aggressive in our process and the way we do things, uh. I think we got to strike the answers, if nobody's looking, uh, it doesn't go ahead.
Or as they say in baseball, never end, never end. But thank you for, thank you for having us, it's been a lot of fun, and it's a very interesting thing, and we'll, you know, we'll keep our eyes.
Well, as we go forward, and I think when the, when it does happen, and I think will, I think it's gonna be a break somewhere in it, it's gonna. And it'll be a big explosion all at one time. When that starts, uh, I'll kind of look forward to it, I won't be around when it happens.
Well, all we can hope for is that we don't miss the market again.
Yeah.
That's the biggest issue.
But you getting us out there, like I say, if you're not in the forefront selling yourself, it's not, they ain't gonna, they're not just gonna walk up to you. You gotta go get them, that's what, we appreciate you being part of our team, making it happen for us.
That could help, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Robin. Any other questions? Um, I think there's one part, um. I think I missed about talking about, I was talking about, uh, hit this real fast on the transportation side. A part didn't bring up, you know, sitting on the WMPO, we're looking at what's going on, they have some problems as far as, uh. Funding is always a big issue, we talked about on the WMPO. And they're coming up with a different system, basically on how they're prioritizing projects. In the WPO area, which is no pen or, you know, that is from. So they steal some money issue, and then we have a problem with the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge project. Uh, some of the other projects that we thought were being fully funded again. After the, uh, COVID and everything, it's kind of draw away from everything, resources removed. Uh, now they want to reprioritize some of the jobs through a different method. Uh, so some of them are gonna hurt, some of them probably gonna be funded even more, uh. But Cape Fear Memorial Bridge is not, believe it or not, that fifty-one-year-old bridge is not. Very high on the priority level. Not in the state bid, it is in our bid locally. But we're trying to find a mechanism to get that big bridge replaced, and get an overhead span bridge. Put in next to it. But you figure if we, at this time, we've got sixty-two thousand cars estimated today across that bridge. Sixty-two thousand. Three to five years, it's gonna be ninety-something. It costs almost fifteen million dollars a year to maintain the existing bridge. Fifteen million a year. So we got to find a process that we're working on now is to convince the state in the process to move that bridge up on a priority. So we're gonna be pushing hard and fighting hard to get that bridge put where it should be, to the top priority and not a low priority. So we're gonna be working on that. Also, they're looking at pushing on getting, uh, basically what you hear about the light rail, get more train a train or train or tracks coming into this area. It can help with the transportation between some of our key cities and beyond that. So that's a process they're working on, as well as the rail realignment is still a top project. Uh, and with our state port running, generates, generates huge amount of money for our state and area. And you gotta have a way to move it all more efficiently. So all that comes under the WMPO umbrella and pushing it. And we're gonna convince, uh, do it, I got a meeting, I think it's still Wednesday, Wednesday. Uh, WMPO meeting again, so it's getting crucial that we're putting a plan together, put more energy or force on our project here in this area. And, uh, so I'm looking forward to it, it's gonna be something else. So right now, Wilmington is not we just not on the top of the priority list where we should be for the way we're rolling in this entire area. But that's it, and we'll give you update, like I say, you can look on the site, pull up all the information, see if there's some projects and everything's going on right now, which we have two of those projects that, you know, were approved, it's in the process now. But DOT working on the section of one thirty-three out here, they've already started surveying. So we know all these are gonna happen, so next year, it'll be a busy year for us, real busy year, and a good, good time. If there's no comments, we'll move on to item eleven. Uh, which is a closed session under North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dash eleven eight three, attorney consultation. If I could have a motion, we go into closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Have it, we go into closed session, I hope.